Right, I'll call this from the order. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Kaho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Hillsaback.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Anstrom.
Here.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
There are none.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Item three, mark it down, no presentations, petitions, or other communications. No one. Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Yes.
Thank you to everybody who came down for the tree dedication on Tuesday. It was great. I think, are we all, are they all around? Close?
Close, really close. I gotta need to weld one together.
Okay.
And we, uh, we're twenty-eight over on Cambridge Street. The work, but we're real close.
So we're super close. Once us get done, there's a group of us that will come in and do the mulch underneath. And then they will be really done done. We all have to take a little walk into downtown. Look what a great job the kids did and all the work's done. So thank you all.
You're welcome.
You start a mulch by any time.
Okay. All right.
Excellent. Other public comments. Moving on, reports of standing committees, A, Policy Administration Williamson.
The report, your honor.
Uh, B, Public Safety and Transportation, Hillsaback.
Uh, yep, we have a couple things on our agenda here. Um, the first one is to update on the school crossing guard coverage at First and Story Street. Um, some background, so the chief, uh, discussed with Julie, the school superintendent, um, uh, the potential of removing the crossing guard at First and Story Street. Um, heard the chief and Julie, um, they really had no concerns, uh, with the city not providing this crossing guard there at the location. Um, basically, they're only seeing about two to three kids a day. Um, and then they, we do struggle a lot with finding crossing guards to cover positions. Um, so really, uh, at Public Safety, we just talked about pretty much ex nay-ing that position.
That'd be the last crossing guard.
Yes. Sorry. Well, that's the last crossing guard we have. Um, it is at an intersection with push-button crossing and lights. Um, right now, typically in the wintertime, that crossing, or it's, well, the crossing guard's hours are an hour in the morning, before school, an hour after school. It's very hard to find anybody that's free for tho- those short times for the amount that the position pays. And, um, in the wintertime, sometimes it's nobody crosses. Right now, that's really nice. He's seeing four to five kids, uh, in the morning and four or five kids in the evening. And it just, um, really isn't needed. Believe it or not, people drive their kids to the bus stop to let the kids out or the car to get on the bus. And that's, we see tons of cars there for that at both, um, both Lincoln Pickup and at Page School, so. That's our recommendation. Like I said, I talked to, or, or, like, um, councilman said, I talked to, uh, the superintendent, she's perfectly fine with it as well.
Yeah, living in the neighborhood and having kids, and all, uh, with that push button on First Street, it's not really a big deal, I don't feel.
Perfect. That was good to me.
Do we need anything further on that, or is that just kind of a journal update?
Just empty.
Perfect. Uh, number two is an update on the school resource officer contract. Do you want to take that over?
Certainly. Um, our current school resource officer contract, um, expires, or, I guess, excuse me, auto renews, uh, July first of this year. Since that contract's been in place, there's been no increase in, um, their portion of paying us for that position. Uh, when this started, they paid about fifty percent, or that was the agreement, they paid fifty percent. Now, they're paying, uh, like thirty-nine percent, uh, due to raises over the years and that not being included in that community agreement. So, because of, um, some legislative issues, both at the federal level and at the state level, um, we've, uh, tentatively agreed or, or, or asking for an agreement to do a one-year extension. And within the next year, Julie and I come up with a plan where they're gonna give back to that fifty percent, whether that's, you know, the first year, or it's a step process, but something that, um, is agreeable to both parties. They, they understand they need to get back to it. They, their funding source apparently for that position comes out of federal money from them. They don't know what's happening with the federal money, um, if the department bag goes away. So there's some limbo, so I think it's perfectly reasonable for a one-year extension and figure it out in this, in this next year.
They've been really good partners in the program.
Yes, they've been very, very good partners. They support the SRO, um, they, they love having an officer there, and it works out very well for both parties. And we'll get some.
Consent. That agreement's in consent, so we don't need a.
Awesome. Uh, number three is discuss approve the story street traffic signal options. Uh, Waylon, do you want to?
Backstory history here, uh, I provided Public Safety Committee with a couple options, uh, tried to get some options close to what we had discussed earlier, when we go back in history to late August, September last year, when we talked about stop signs, and then I, I sat down with the the manual uniform on traffic control devices and decided that stop signage was very difficult to comply with all the regulations federally do. So the two options that I presented was, uh, converting the signals we have and still maintaining the infrastructure we have uptown so that we don't get in a place where we need these someday and don't have the infrastructure, you know? One of our concerns is that you're, you're possibly anywhere from eighty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars in infrastructure, if we get to remove that, that may need to come back someday, and we already have it, so it's nice to have, um. There's an option here where I, I left the, the yield to pedestrians instead of the stop pedestrians, they already have to stop. I like the yield personally, and I like the conversion of the single light, but I believe that Public Safety came to the conclusion that they like the single light beacon option over everything else, but I was just kind of supposed to, to talk to you guys about what, what's going on. We have not budgeted this, but we could find the, the finances for it. This option was somewhere around twenty thousand for everything from Sixth Street to Eleventh Street. This includes Eleventh Street to convert that because of the problems that have aro- arose with the, the habit and the stop sign. I do feel there's some, some stuff about eighth and betting, but I think that's far enough out of the area that they're, they're obviously just missing a traffic law when they miss that.
Does that include the signs, Waylon?
That does not include the signage, I guess. I can get a little, uh, closer. I would say each one of those signs is thirty-six dollars, so add seventy-two.
That's fine.
Uh, oh. Under a thousand, probably. So I, I don't think that's make the break of it. I, I really like the, the yield, and, and we don't have to do both yields, we could do one. Uh, your guys' opinion there. It, uh, it does make it fairly busy, but it makes it visible and, and.
So you're gonna remove the existing ones and the crosswalk signs? Right? And just every, all we'll have left is the, just these two?
The top, the top light
Right.
is a full, the three-head light comes off, and I will maintain all those parts for spare parts.
Right.
And we purchase a single bulb flash to go on that.
Right.
The side ones are easier to work on, and I've got a contractor that will tear them apart, remove the two heads that aren't needed, and put it back together, um, for for that, and we'll still have the other spare parts.
Both. It's like that.
Yeah, I think single bulb from eight to eleventh, certainly.
Oh wait, it looks like it's supposed to be that way.
And a flashing red.
It's a flashing red.
Okay, so everybody stops.
Would be a flashing red, this, this gets us back to the stop bars in front of the crosswalk will comply with the stop flashing beacon, um, as a stop light.
Oh, it's like a stop sign in that.
It's like a stop size, stop light functioning as a stop sign. And, uh, for a, uh, placement.
So all the way from six to eleven.
Six to eleven.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with committee's recommendation.
Yeah.
Yep. So I believe we will need approval, um, to move forward with this as well.
Make a motion to approve the single beacon lights inside.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Uh, next on the agenda is to discuss and approve adding a four-way stop sign at Aldridge Avenue and South Clinton Street.
Um.
Want to take it over?
Yep. Backstory on this one, uh, when the school, middle school changed the, uh, pickup and drop-off location, uh, for the middle school, they asked for a roll out stop sign at that intersection. Um, we agreed to do that with the stipulation that they're responsible for moving it in and out. They are poor at taking it in and out. Usually they take it out, but they never take it back off the road. Um, and there's enough traffic there for, uh, soccer practices afterwards or tennis meets that our recommendation is just to make that a permanent four-way stop now, actually sign it properly instead of a rollout.
There was also Public Safety's recommendation to go ahead and approve that as well. If I can make that motion, as long as there's no other questions.
Sounds good. Second.
And now we'll take an ordinance change, so Raven will take care of that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on that? I know I've been through that with practices a lot, there's a lot of traffic to me.
Yep.
Please support it. Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Uh, the final thing we have on here is to discuss installing a streetlight on Destiny Drive. Um, the backstory on that is we do have a resident who requested to put a streetlight up, um, just because it is dark in that area. Um, we talked about it during public safety meeting. Uh, Chief Leebold said that it was kind of dark there, and he would like to see one there, correct? Um, the cost on that light, which right here, would be about thirteen hundred, um, and then a monthly cost of the light is just eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Um, at the meeting, unfortunately, there was only two of us, uh, and we both kind of had different opinions. Um, so it was basically a tie. It didn't pass at all, and so we're bringing it to council to get a full vote. So that way we can either vote to approve it or deny it.
Bruce, that's.
It's right by the baseball fields.
The issue is the developer should have put the light in there when it was put, when they developed the land out there. They didn't put it on there because it didn't seem to be fit at that point. Um, in the past year, we have made this a non-through-street. There is no traffic on this road. It is just people that live on the road. Um, and so I don't know why we would need to put a light up there. And we're getting in a really big habit of when some one person complains or wants something changed, we're, we're changing our rules for one person, or, you know, two people over two years, or, so it, I, I don't think it's necessary to put a light up there on this road. If there was needed of have a light there, they would have put one in there when they developed the land.
Are those guards in there all year round or just during season?
These are the ball.
So it does get through traffic then on non-season ball? I mean, for the.
It's not a through-street.
Right.
Um, but when the development was built under the guidelines, if the rules from the fire department, he wanted to have that open for fire trucks to be able to go through, and
Sure.
and I wanted my snowplow, uh, trucks to be able to drive through into the parking lot, so there's no true street access, but city-owned property parking lot, so it i- it is through. Yeah, in, in the sense.
Okay.
Chief, what do you think?
So we've had, um, it's been over a year now. We had a, we have had a few calls out there, and it is a dark area, uh, because there's trees on the west side that block any light, or most of the light coming from the ball field, if those lights are on. Um, and I just know in the calls we've had out there, it is, is quite dark.
More questions, discussion?
Now, that was before all of the homes were built, so if all of the homes have outside lights on now, I, I can't say that's currently dark, but a couple years ago, when there was, I think, two or three open lots, it was quite dark.
Um, so I guess personally, I'd like to make that motion to install a streetlight on the Destiny Drive.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. Any other questions or discussion?
I drove through the lot on, or through the road on Friday. Uh, I'm at the ball fields three times a week. It's not that dark. Um, if they needed a light there, they should have put a light there when the developer put the, put it in.
Any other questions or discussion?
Maybe something as developments are continuing to happen that we really look at lighting on the front end, so.
We're not in this.
Not in the spot.
Good point.
Uh, seeing no other questions or discussion, please call the roll.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
No.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Uh, utility, Anstrom.
Uh, we'll have a utility meeting on the sixteenth at five.
On the sixteen.
That's a time change, instead of being at four-thirty, we're gonna go at five.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, D Economic Development, Mormon.
Um, Andrea and I made a trip to De Soto today, look at, uh, development. Uh, housing development down there by a developer that has some interest in Boone, um, be towards a couple of houses. Um, pretty nice, so we'll share some additional information later.
That's all I have, your honor.
How large, did you say?
Sorry?
How large, how many houses, nuts? We don't know that.
Well, we don't, we don't know.
Okay.
We don't know.
They're just.
So the price point or?
Oh, the price point is two fifty to three twenty-five. It's, it's workhorse housing. And they're really nice. I mean, they're two, three, four-bedroom, um, full basement.
All right. Uh, Department Reports, Building Official Dave. Thank you. City Attorney Ray.
I'll report, your honor. Uh, Director of Public Work, Cleveland. Thank you, your honor. A couple things real quick, uh, citywide cleanup is underway, uh, going well. Everything's doing pretty good, actually. Uh, second thing is, uh, do you remember last year, the, uh, lead water service line reports and all the notifications that had to go out to homeowners? I will be required to send another one out to homeowners before July second of this year. Oh, there's a potential that I will, won't be here at the next meeting to update you guys when that comes out. Uh, we, we plan on that mailer going out through CDS. We're in process of getting them all our information, our numbers and everything right now. Uh, we audited our books and we reduced the number of letters needing to go out, uh, by a couple hundred from, from last inventory. And, uh, I think somewhere in the high sixteen hundreds, uh, for services out of the almost seven thousand that we have. So just wanted to let you guys know that constituents with lead water services are getting them. They are completely required by DNR, EPA, and all it is, is a, a document stating how they, how they contest, what they do with lead water, so.
There's no change in the guidance.
No change in the guidelines or anything yet. Actually, I'm not even required to update my inventory to the DNR for three years. Don't want to hear from you until they just want to know that I sent these letters, so. That's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, D Library Jamie's not here because she's at the, the Library Carnival, and there were a lot of people down there every year before, uh, the first June meeting. It's a nice time, and it's always the hottest day of, of the early summer. But, a lot of, a lot of great, uh, partners down there, so thanks to all of them at the library for doing that. Uh, also, uh, E Park Director Mike Cornelis is not here. He's, uh, he was injured this spring. Uh, but he did want me to pass on a couple of items at the parks on, uh, both from him and, uh, one from David Cherry, that, um, they have applied for the, uh, matching grant for the tennis court resurfacing at McCos Park. Um, they're using twenty-five thousand dollars as the match, the grant match on that, and they'll know the outcome of that in a couple of weeks. Um, and then, uh, Dave Cherry updated me that they got approval today from, uh, the ISU College of Design that, uh, they have a class that's going to focus on, um, uh, diagramming what they can do to, uh, update some of our parks. And so they're gonna have an entire design class, a five-hundred level class dedicated to Boone Parks, and how they can make some improvements to them, and then the Park Commission will take some guidance and inspiration from that as they put forward their ten-year comprehensive. Um, Dave gave me a couple of the names of the professors that were working on it, and I, of course, I forgot them, uh, but they were gonna be.
Timeline.
They're gonna be, it's a, it's a fall project. It's a fall semester.
Okay, good.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Quick, on the tennis court thing, is the school planning on chipping anything in on that?
So here's the thing, the twenty-eight E agreement, um, was actually signed for a ten-year time span in twenty, twenty-seventeen, and it was for a flat upfront payment, which was half, half of the resurfacing cost at that time. So the intent was to resurface after ten years, so of course it's before ten years now. And so the school district had paid the required portion at that time. And so that's what the twenty-eight E agreement said is that they were paying for half of it at that time, and there was gonna be renewal in twenty-twenty-seven, but we're actually repa- resurfacing them two years earlier than, uh, we had planned on doing that. So that's the, oh, runner in that, and of course, their twenty-eight E, uh, expires in twenty-twenty-seven, so we'll talk about that when it comes up.
I know.
Yeah. Thanks, Brad.
Okay, your honor, uh, sounds good. Uh, we're gonna ask about, uh, an application for, from the Lowry Charitable Foundation for a fishing program in McCos Pond. Uh, what this grant would do would provide roughly fifteen poles and some startup capital to do some youth beginning, uh, fishing program, having four or five dates. Um, I've been talking with the DNR and, uh, some exciting things that they said they could do. Nothing I can probably say at this meeting, but, uh, I think there's some opportunity there to get some, uh, a youth program for fishing in McCos, and, uh, that's what this grant money would go to purchase poles, so we could teach kids who are familiar with fishing, uh, hopefully how to, how to fish. It's called fishing, not catching, right? But, uh, they'll be better than me in about twenty minutes, I have a feeling, so. That's what, uh, the, the request here is for, and, uh, this, that's.
So I could give a little bit of additional information on the Lowry Charitable Trust. Um, you know, that is a trust that, uh, awards grants twice a year. Um, all of the mayors serve on it, um, and from the county. And also, um, County Board Supervisors has a seat. And it, uh, is supposed to be geared towards youth-oriented activities, and so as long as your application really expresses that it's for youth-oriented stuff, um, it'd be a strong one for the July application period.
Yeah, and I'll take you back, uh, I'd like to thank some of my friends over at Boone County Conservation who recommended this, uh.
Thinking a lot.
They, they told me about it, and, uh, I think it's a great opportunity, and I was thinking about doing fishing for kids and begging, uh, some poles from the DNR, which they, they've agreed to do if we need them. But, uh, this would be nice to be able to do it a little more freely.
There's no match, it's just a grant.
No match. This would get us started with fifteen poles and I've done a lot of fishing programs for fifteen kids and just me. That's about, that's a, that's a massive.
Enough.
Maybe it's more like twelve, and we sit three, facing it broke, but, uh, yeah, I, I think it'd be a good, good number to start for kids, and it's really meant for those who are not currently fishing much. Would like to learn how to tie simple knots for their hook and land a fish and take that hook out, which hopefully doesn't lead into fish surgery, as I call it.
Perfect. Perfect. We're both on that?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
It's okay.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Hey, H, uh, Public Safety Chief Leebold.
Yes, your honor. Uh, we have a, um, a noise permit application, uh, for a residential, uh, I think it's a baby shower?
Right.
Yeah. Um, and they want to have a band, and it's, they back up to the park. So per code, they need to have a, a, uh, approval for this, um, permit, or this noise permit, so I, I see no issue whether the timeline sees during the day, it's not late in the evening, and it should, I mean, says it's a four-piece band, so depending on what they're playing and, uh, kind of speaker stuff, it shouldn't be a problem for the neighbors.
And the hours, you said, are afternoon?
Yeah.
Four to seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yeah, four to seven thirty.
So it's not late in the video into the night.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion. Hillsaback.
Please call the roll.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Uh, ICD Administrator Andrea.
Uh, the first item on there is discuss placing written notice on violation on doors regarding chapter one fifty-one, not just we, um, so she's got it up there. So you guys brought, this got brought up at the last council meeting, and you were asked to bring it back. Here's an example of what we put together. Um, Rave and Jim looked it over. He, they did recommend that we change that last paragraph to say you are hereby notified to keep the premise of such property clean and to remove from the premise all items selected above. Failure to comply may result in the city abating the nuisance and assessing the cost against the premises. So that's the only change that, that, from what's up there. But as you can see, this, um, would allow, uh, our CSO Ron to use it for multiple reasons, whether it is grass, snow removal, junk in the, um, yard, or a inoperable vehicle. Um, and all he would have to do is check it, sign it, put a date on it, and then put it on the door.
What's the timeframe to comply? Shouldn't that be on there?
Um, well, for like grass, um, we didn't want to put a timeframe on there, because if we put it on there on Thursday, then, and say seventy-two hours, that would mean that our mower guy would have to go out after seventy-two hours.
Do we want something that says it could be mowed immediately? Or do we not need to? I don't know, that's a legal question.
See, I, I think by
I'll get to you, I'll get to you.
Not including a specific time duration on there, the, I mean, that'll allows us to be able to go in there whenever our contractor's able to do, which my understanding, he gets the list at the end of the week, he usually gets them done over the weekend. I didn't want to get in a position where if he went on a Saturday morning, and we have concerns that, well, I thought I had seventy-two hours or whatever, so. Uh.
What if he, what if he used three business days?
Well, so typically Ron goes out on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, looks through the yards, creates his list, and then Thursday, um, evening, Friday morning, he goes back out and confirms all the lawns that have already been mowed, and he needs to take off the lift. Um, so they would get this notice typically Monday, Monday through Wednesday, and then the lawn would be mowed on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, whenever the lawn go, mower goes and does it.
Yeah, keep in mind that our, our ordinance for grass, they said no further notices required. This is in addition to.
Right.
In addition to that.
Provided.
Okay. That's being nice.
Do we have a comment?
Uh, good question. Question. Um, explain to me the grass or leaves on street. Leaves, well, we have a lot of big trees at our house, and so the leaves in the street, I mean, I, were to take care of?
You can't blow them in the street.
Grass flipping.
Oh, you can't put them there, no.
Yeah.
Well, I had a situation where a cow was raking her entire lawn, lawn, uh,
Into the street, oh, yeah.
You know, you're saying, that's what, that's what.
We don't do that, and actually, my husband mows along the curb in the street. I have to just to keep it down, but.
But that's what.
Okay.
Intentionally putting them on the street. Yeah. You said, did you have something?
Yeah, um, for one, I kind of have issues with this entire program. It feels predatory and, um, anti-citizen, so that's my thing. Um, there's also a lot of what it would be, opinions about what is good. Grass is good, grass dies. With, I think people should be allowed to have sustainable um, drought-resistant plants on their properties if they want to. So, But that's another story, um, this particular thing, I think it's hostile. When I saw it, I was like smack in the face. I I just. I feel like it makes us look like assholes. So.
What would you recommend, I mean, tell me how how you would.
But what's often that or? That Bill had last year when we talked about this. Cause it was a something he wrote up about, it was a little more, um. If you're having issues with getting your lawn mowed, contact the city. It may not relieve you of the. And I thought this was a, we were going in the right directions.
So that wasn't something that they put on the door, that was just something we posted on Facebook.
Posted that on.
Why can't we put that on the door? And I understand why you want to be efficient, by the way, what is P R O W, I don't know where.
I'll public right away, by the way.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, journalism, I hate jargon, so, um. Yeah, I thought that note that Bill had come up, it was a better compromise. And this is no compromise, it's just. Getting to be more. We know everything, our way is always right. And just not a fan of. This sort of. Communication.
Well, would you say this is, I mean, for a repeat offender, I mean, somebody that just continually doesn't take care of their grounds or their yard?
I don't have all the answers, but I do have constituents who. Even for that first time they get mowed, it creates a whole lot of. Anxiety and distrust. And you don't have to work that hard to not be trusted, so. Um, I would like to see this be reworked and I'd be happy to help with that. I don't have a legal mind, but. I feel like.
So this this was um copied from multiple other cities that and this is what they were doing, so this was not something that we just created, this is something that. Um, Ron actually went to a training um two weeks ago and asked for other cities examples.
I've been on the council for three years. And we've had two people. That have come in and complained about this in three years. I'm going to go back to the same reason why I don't want to put a street light on Destiny Drive. Is why are we changing the way that we completely do everything? For one person. Or two people, when I first started on council, Country Club Drive is one of the worst driveways, roads in Boone. The curbs are sinking in, all the gutters are falling in, and yet we've swept that underneath the rug, we had the whole, we had the whole neighborhood sitting in here, in here. At a public safety meeting and we did nothing about it. And now, because we've had two people in three years that I've been on the council that have complained about this. We do not give, we don't give notifications to anybody that's parked in the right way when we do snow, we ticket and tow them. So we ticket, we ticket, I will ticket and tow and the first, after the first snow, just like after the first round of mowings. People get the idea and they mow their yards. So that one person or two people. Everybody learns from that and what happens is it gets put on Facebook and it blows up on Facebook, but if we put something on Facebook, we can't get any traction. Nobody wants to comment it on it, nobody wants to share it, but if somebody makes a complaint about the city on a public page, whether it's an uncensored or not censored page. It'll blow up like crazy. But when we try to put stuff on there that's informative to people, it gets swiped away. So I don't know how much more we can do to try to get our information out to everybody, because that was the first place that this gentleman went to on Facebook and complained. After he talked to Ron, after he, so he talked to Ron, but still. That's what happens, it happened last year when we went through this, that there was other person that got on Facebook and complained about it. But help us out by getting the word out on Facebook instead of just coming in and trying to beat us in the ground about it. That's the problem I have, we don't like with the with the parking situation with the downtown, we don't give. warnings to people that are parked illegally, we give them a ticket. Um, snow ordinances, we don't give warnings, we give them a ticket, we tow them, then they have to pay to get their vehicles out. So if we're going to change that, we might as well change it for all of our ordinances, whether it's a speeding ticket that he has to get a a seventy two hour notice to give him a speeding ticket.
My comment is, this is a big problem, I mean. You know, or if it's just a. Occasional. Situation, I mean. If it's if it's not a frequent problem, yeah.
It's twice in three years, I've been on the council for three years.
City mows a lot of lawns.
That I was gonna say, you don't know about.
Doesn't mean everybody comes, so I am, I I have gotten many messages and calls over the years about it, so.
Complaints or?
Couple people that have come, but I. So anyway, so I promised that I would like you weigh in, so go ahead.
I can go first, so my name is Katie Schlosski and I live at three fifteen Menon Street, um. Couple Saturdays ago, we at seven P M, we had someone come through our yard and mow it. I am trying to make a more diverse lawn in my yard. I have a degree in agronomy, I am a certified crop advisor, I have multiple hours of. Continuing education that I have to do a year. There are things that I'm doing in my lawn that I don't want other people to touch, now, I'm going to put that to the side because that's something that's right, that is an ecological issue. This is more of a community issue. How much is it to? Or when someone has their lawn mowed by the city without notice?
Just forty five dollars. For the mowing cost, nine times, first time, two hundred dollars and a second time. Put it between you and so off there.
So with that forty five dollars, you can imagine families that are struggling. And have that five day notice, let's say, for example, my sister who was in the hospital for six weeks with her little baby. They didn't get to their house very often at that point, they barely had someone to go in and check on their cat. They didn't have time to mow the lawn. The city graciously graciously put on their store. That, hey, your lawn is too long, you have five days to give this mow, they were able to call us and have us come over and mow it. It's more of a notification. What was done on our lawn was one singular plant, not a weed, weed is something that it is a plant that is somewhere that is not supposed to belong. All the plants are in my lawn, but wow. I make sure I don't have any noxious weeds, I make sure that I am a good neighbor, I keep my flower beds nice, I have composting, all of that. But. Besides the point, forty five dollars can be detrimental for a lot of families. Especially if they keep coming back. And if they have, let's say, a mower that isn't working and, oh, I have to fix that and they'll get it done within three days or they'll get it, uh, they get this on their door, they say, hey, three days from now. You have to have it mowed, they can call their neighbors, say, hey, my my mower is broke, can you come over there? It's about communication, that's what really frustrated me about this situation, it's the lack of communication. Those that have Facebook, I'm not on Facebook very often, I don't look at the social pages, I don't, I don't even look at what he's been, I don't even read that, I'm not on it. So. Same with old people, if they are on their eighty five year old, you think they're going to have internet and pay for internet to go on Facebook and see those posts? Probably not, and that old person probably can't go out there and mow the lawn. And then you come and stack a forty five dollar bill on them and then they have to limit their budget even more. That's what makes me mad. So that's what I have to say and I hope you consider that this is something as a community that has to happen. And based off of this, I really do think we have to put a timestamp on there with or a notification of seventy two hours or three days. Even though on the uh code it says five days, we'll say that. But have a timestamp there, so then there's nothing that comes back to argue for on the attorney side, say, hey, this is actually what happened. Because I actually don't trust Ron to put on the right date there. He's going to be doing this and his buddy who doesn't even knock on doors, that's really what we do now. Is that he just came mowing mine by the same. That really pissed me off. And then I go out there and I ask him, you think he's knocking on the door, he's like, uh, no, I don't do that. This is literally what he said.
Yeah, I think that part is the contractor, you know, that's a private contractor, so their contractor jumps and mows.
And then he said, that's not my problem, contact Ron, I wonder how many emails or calls that Ron has got that y'all haven't heard. There's that, just saying. So that's why I think we should at least have the decency to communicate with our community. And try to figure out how to make this violation. Less stressful for everyone, because this is, oh, this is something dumb that we're all focused on, wasting our time on. Like plans really, they just do what they do, so. That's that's my, that's my thing. Okay, Kim.
Yeah, I just have a few more notes to add in addition to what I had last week, our last meeting, uh. Facebook is not anywhere near an appropriate. Uh, tool for getting the word out. They're driven on posts that get comments and likes and a post about notifying people.
Just one point of clarification, it does come in the water bill in the city newsletter as well.
Right, that is just, that is just a. Correct, John, but. That is just a notification of the general. Presence of the orgs, that is not a notice of violation.
Yeah, correct.
Sorry, one question, with a lot of those, don't we have emails for that, can we send out emails rather than?
They do.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's violation, we get emails?
No, for the the ordinance notification like you're talking.
Sort of.
Does it go, does it go on e notify?
Hey, I actually, the system has not been working on the city website. Uh, we can cannot currently, at least last I read, or last I tried, I was not able to sign up and read the newsletter. On any of the past bills, the last six months, eight months, I don't know.
Can we check the links, but you can sign up to get them emailed to you when they are posted. Yeah, yeah, so anything, you can sign up to get anything that's posted on the website, whether it be agenda or newsletter or anything like that out of time. But we'll check the links on the things that have been posted previously.
Yeah, no, I.
They're not dead links or something.
We really exhaust all the avenues. That we have for communication, we put it in the paper, we put it on e notify, we put it in the water bill. We put it on our Facebook page, we put it on our government website. There's not too many other venues that we have to make that communication.
On the radio.
On the radio, so, I mean.
But any of this.
There's there's no, I don't know, venues we have.
Between the notification of the violation versus the notification of the ordinance. And that's what we're talking about, the notification of violation is the important part.
I I I I kind of agree, I want to see a timestamp on that of some type. Whether it's three business days or whatever the case may be, so that they know when they have to have it done by.
When we talked about Ron taking pictures too, when he put it on there.
There'll be a, there'll be a digital stamp on that, that image to to go to.
How would we know?
So it's verified that he wrote it and took the picture on that day.
So then what happens when they come in and say, well, I didn't see it, it wasn't on the door, even though he's got a picture and it got mowed?
That's the part where.
That's where we're going to have him sitting right here the next time around saying, well, I never got the sticker.
That, I mean, I I will, I will get. So I I think that part, though, we've done more than the ordinance requires. We've tried to make the process more um. Frictionless by giving that notification and I would be willing to, you know, rest that at that time. Notice was given. As in accordance with policy.
But to that point, though, it's. To that point, though, it's it's not.
It's not about the wind is blowing it away, it doesn't happen, it's like every year, it's so. So that's not an excuse, and they are, if that is, then it's not too big of a.
We've we've done our due diligence and put them.
And I think you should have, I don't think that we should have violation.
Yeah, I understand, I don't think we're going to get to that point at this discussion right now, um, go ahead.
I'm good with this, this is a notice of violation, I don't want to see any changes to it, uh. Yeah, I mean. I think there is. I don't know what what.
The contract, the more we can. Yeah, the contract's a seventy two hours, but I think writing it on there is your point. Will be mowed within seventy two hours or.
With the date, they already know that.
Do they? I mean, it's, it's five days in the.
Yeah, for other noxious weeds.
I get it for granted.
I understand.
We didn't have, did not have noxious weeds.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
I had no recourse to, to say.
That's what we're working on, right?
We can grow whatever you want in your lawn, just keep it under twelve inches.
Hang on, that's. I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move on, I'm gonna move on, guys. I think, I think, I I think you expressed what you needed to, I'm gonna move on because there's other folks in the back that want to have a.
Yeah, I think.
Jimmy?
So, yeah, for two sixty fifth street, um, I've been in here several times talking about it and I know many, many, many community members have talked about it more than two times in three years that that have. Been here, in fact, I get stopped in Walmart all the time by people who want to talk to me about this issue because I've talked about it a lot. And my yard is is going grass free, so I talk to Ron all the time, he stops by my place all the time, I'm always outside cleaning grass out of my yard. So what this, what what needs to change is the actual ordinance and there needs to be better clarification. If you're talking about noxious weeds, dandelions are not a noxious weed, they're not listed as a noxious weed. Uh, clover is not a noxious weed, it's not listed as a noxious weed, native grasses are not noxious weeds to my, and I think that the turf grass should be a noxious weed, it's not native. Doesn't belong here to some more vital services. Now, your opinion of grass is, really, I like that you like grass and you should be able to have the grass that you want in your lawn. And so should be, and so should everybody else who wants to have a different type of lawn. There shouldn't be such an ordinance put in place that is so restrictive. That people cannot do what they wish with their property when it is literally not harming anyone. In fact, people walk by my house all the time. I'm outside all the time and they stop and ask me about my clover lawn, how do you do this, how can I put this in my lawn? It is eco friendly, it's good for the environment. Our our designer for our downtown Boone logo and the the town logo, didn't he get the color scheme from that because? He, when he visited Boone, it was nature oriented, trees, flowers, plants. Why can't we have a diverse lawn? It it shouldn't matter to you what I have in my lawn, what is not actually affecting you. You put enough pesticides on your lawn to kill those dandelion seeds that fly over to yours, but I want my lawn to be pesticide free. Because my family, we eat the pig, we eat the dandelions, we make a violet syrup out of our violets. And I should be able to do that without needing to live in the country, I should be able to do that in my city. Where I live. Just like you should be able to use the pesticides you want on your lawn that also affects everybody else in the community because of the runoff. Now, I'm highly trained in pesticide management, entomology, horticulture, biology and conservation, I know what I'm talking about. I'm not stupid, I'm also not somebody who's just not mowing their lawn because they're at least. I spend more hours a week in my yard than you guys are keeping your green turf grass pristine. It's not fair, the ordinance itself is not fair. And Ron is targeting people and I know he is because I have had several members of the community approach me over the past two years about being targeted. When one strand of grass in their yard is over twelve inches, he will take a picture of that, what happens to those pictures, why can't we see the pictures? If somebody is saying that there's a problem with my yard, I should be able to speak up and say something about it. So he takes the picture with his yardstick, he measures it, then what happens to those pictures, why can't we see them?
I think we we made those available to people, so.
Where?
Well, they're not, they're not online, but.
Yeah, and that's still leaking a violation of privacy, okay. Yeah, but we we have made them available, so make sure if you if you're not given access to the picture of somebody else's, let us know, let me know, okay?
Yeah, I know, so I'm done.
Yeah. Did you still have something to work on?
Yeah. My will be is, uh. This has came up several times and.
Bree?
It it's something that's simple, saying it's not going for Kyle, we're not asking to move there, I'll do, we're asking to hang it over like a little bit of a notice. Yeah, I I know you're saying this is only two times and and you know, it's it's.
I'm hurting you, every time one citizen shows up here.
So we're going to change one or two people. Didn't I go over?
Let's, let's not.
And that didn't do that.
Let's avoid personal confrontation.
That's, my point is that several people up here. Eli. Show up and waste uncertainty, so when that gets brought up as a reason not to change it, well, no, no one's going to come up here despite turnout in other areas. But if you think it's one or two people, apparently, to share some people, like, you know, you've got some pictures of one lawn last year, um, they showed up to mow. And I went over there and did my own measurement because they kicked them off property and it wasn't even a violation of ordinance, and they're getting ready to mow. Again, I get nuisance laws, all right? Completely get it, they have ones that are, well, I know we're a bunch of them, but they're clearly violated, so I'm not saying that they shouldn't be. Ticked in or cited or whatever, it's completely out of hand like some of these houses are, but. Again, we're asking for minimal effort, the most minimal thing. Amend the ordinance, make it rehang a notice on the door and just give the people a few days. But don't just take and make it out like it's just one citizen to this. Because any anytime we'd like to talk with someone, I'll just reach out to them, you know, before they set it up for you. It would learn that it's more than just one citizen.
Right, all right, perfect, you know what then, I'll make the motion to allow this. An exact verbiage. As a door hanger, door notice, whatever you want to do.
I'd like to see a date on it.
But. There's a date?
No, like.
On when it needs to be. Yeah.
Yeah, and you wanted that too.
No, I don't want any period whatsoever.
He mentioned that he wanted at least seventy two hours or something.
I just don't see anything wrong with putting three business days on there, they have the date that the thing's issued.
Yeah, but what's a business day?
Monday through Friday.
Not for a lawn care professional.
Seventy two hours.
Seventy two hours, because that's what a contract says.
Well, put seventy two hours on there.
Yeah.
But that's a time, so people have time to call or figure it out, I, yes.
Is that, and if we don't get, if if like Andre, if they do it on Thursday and there's seventy two hours, it expires on Saturday. And we don't get there to mow it until Monday, they get five days.
They get three days.
Right, they get three.
So if you want to make the motion. So if you want to make the motion to approve. The notice with a note that says resolve within.
Seventy-two hour.
On the grass.
Right.
Or I'll amend it to that.
Okay. You'll amend your motion.
To that. Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Say seventy.
Business days.
The grass, grass, grass violations must be resolved within seventy-two hours.
Right.
And the notice will be.
Because the, the rest of them are different.
Right. Because he, he's got the date on there, so we know what the seventy-two.
Grass.
And then he'll take a picture of it. So in that situation could then, if they get a notice on Monday, it could be mowed on Thursday.
Correct.
Could be.
So they don't have to only mow on the weekends now. I don't know, maybe the weather.
Well, I'm just saying that a lawn care guy is gonna, is gonna mow on the weekend if he can. So the seventy-two hours is better than business days.
So. We have a motion on the table to adopt the notice of violation with the amendment. That, um, grass violations must be resolved within seventy-two hours.
Can I make one point of clarification? So Andrea did read some revised language for that bottom paragraph. Um, which is my recommendation. Are you fine with that? It just.
Yeah, because it's assessed.
It clears up a little bit of the.
Yeah.
Should with that.
What she said.
Just a little rewording of it.
Yeah.
About how it's.
Sure, yes, of course.
I, I have a question. Is seventy-two hours enough time? I mean.
That's what the contract is with the, with the, with the contractors, so we can guarantee.
If we notify them, they will get it done, you're saying, but. I'm talking about the, the homeowner themselves.
Problem was that, the reason, the reasoning behind that was, what I remember when we initially talked about this was. That if it goes longer than that, we have trouble with our contractors wanting to mow.
It gets too long.
Too long.
But.
Pass. So then we run into problems and they either charge us more, which we have to pass on to them, or they refuse to mow it.
And, and quite frankly, with vacant properties where it was cheaper for them to be in violation of the ordinance.
Right.
Than to actually mow the property themselves.
They know when the grass is long, if you.
Well, the vacant property owners didn't care.
Right, I, I remember that.
Your bill said that. That was the reasoning behind it.
Motion, Corey, for the adopting of this, uh. Notice, the way that Andrea read it. With the note that, uh, grass. Uh, complaints must be, grass violations must be resolved within seventy-two hours.
You're gonna bring this back to us anyway, right? Once final.
I certainly can if you want. Otherwise, I can just make, me and Rafe can make these changes and. Uh, start looking for somebody that can print them.
That's, that's fine, whichever way. As long as I, uh, seventy-two hours gets in there, I am probably.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kahol Kelly.
No.
Mormon.
Yes.
Hillsaback.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
No. Thank you.
All right, uh, the next item is, uh, the arch agreement between the city of Boone and downtown Boone. Um, Rafe and Jim put this together. What it basically, uh, does is lay out, uh, the agreement between the. Downtown Boone and the city of Boone in regards to who's responsible for constructing the arch, installing the arch. Um, and any damages, um, during the installation of the arch. And then it also states that once it is installed, the city will take it and accept the project. And then the arch becomes the, um, responsibility of the city. Um, if they're, if you guys are all in agreement with this, um, then we will present it to downtown Boone. Um, for them to sign, and then once they sign it, we'll bring it back, um, for the council to finalize, to finalize it.
Also has provisions in there that if it has to be moved in the future, we have the opportunity to do that.
And.
Yeah, Holly, do you have anything to add?
Well, I would just, I appreciate all the time that was taken to, uh, get this on paper. I saw this for the first time in the packet, and I think that we might not be on the same page as. As this may seem, that George is the, the driver of the project. And downtown Boone is simply the tier A pass-through. So, um, because I hadn't seen this, my board hasn't seen it, and I just wonder if we could take a minute.
So we're reuniting to council for them to give the okay dissent to you. Because they need to approve what we're. Going to present to you. Um, and because you are the fiduciary, I can't put somebody responsible that doesn't have the money. The project's been ran through Main Street, right?
Sure.
Okay.
So I think we couldn't. Have the board consider contract for council gives direction. For that contract to be considered.
Okay, so the next thing could be with the site location.
Well, you can make the, you can make those revisions and send it back to us for. Right?
Yeah, or you guys can ask that.
Break through your revisions with your, with your committee and, and. Make recommendations and bring it back to us, and that's kind of how it works.
Do we have a site yet?
Yeah, uh, Main Street, my vision bank, yeah, on the north side. Yeah, it's, it's, if you're, yeah, if your committee wants to make, uh, revisions to make sure that, uh, everybody's on the same page for what. Uh, downtown's meeting's role is in it. And if you want to put in the initial site. I don't think anybody here would have a problem with that.
Yeah, this, this agreement is just saying that the, the city just gets to approve of the placement of it. So, yeah.
It's not Main Street's or downtown's project. Like, this is. Not our project. So assuming liability for a project that belongs to us. I guess we were talking about it as an agency, what we think, but.
Well, if, if it's not your project. Why isn't George doing it?
Now, this was George's deal, wasn't it?
Then, then why is Main Street involved with this?
Because in 101C three. It's a final. As, as the fiduciary pass-through, yes, for the, for the grants, yes.
I mean, what would your recommendation be, Rafe?
Well, I think it, I mean, construction of the progress, until the city accepts it, when it's completed, um. There, somebody has to be responsible for it, so. If George is essentially funneling the money through you guys, um. I guess you guys will have to sort that out with him. I, George wants to be, uh, liable if it collapses and damages a bunch of property. I guess that he'll have to. Be willing to do that. But the city's not gonna be liable for something until they accept, which.
Well, that was my understanding the whole time anyway.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
The, the only thing that gave me thought here was that if it reads as it's downtown Boone's project. And the, from my board, the only thing we committed to is being the grant pass-through. So maybe we could put this on hold and have a conversation with George and see like. How liability-wise.
That's fine. We just have to figure out what the, who would be liable during the construction.
Right, right, because. I, I don't.
Well, I, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that whoever you hire to install this.
Yeah, they.
Will have builder's insurance or whatever, like a normal contractor has.
Yes.
So they'd be liable during that construction.
A general contractor.
Am I, is it, is that my right, Rafe? When they're building, builder's insurance?
If I, so. Like, George is hiring the contractor?
Yes. Yes, this is not our project. We're not managing this project at all.
So that contractor should have to prove to the city that they have insurance. Builder's insurance.
Full permit.
Once that's, once you guys review that and they have builder's insurance, then they can go ahead and proceed. That their, the liability would be on them, right?
Yeah, I guess I was under the impression that, um, downtown Boone.
Am I right, Jim, or no?
It'll be on, the city's gonna get sued as well. And if, uh, downtown Boone is involved, whether it be as a pass-through and something happens, they're gonna get sued.
Well, yeah, so, yeah. They're gonna sue everybody in sight, right?
Accept their responsibility.
So if it was the contractor, when we, when George picks the contractor, would that be a sufficient agreement between the construction contractor and the city?
I don't think it would be a contract with the city.
No, the contractor.
Oh, the.
The contractor's saying that, yes, they assume the liability.
Just like a ton of other projects. We, uh, we approve them, but we don't go on and look at all the subcontractors and all of those kinds of things. That's up to you folks to do.
So who's. So who's gonna write the checks out to the contractor?
I think that as the fiduciary pass-through, it is downtown Boone.
Yeah, you guys are right in the middle of the action as a fiduciary, don't you think, right?
Yeah, but.
I, I don't think there's really any way around it. If you are gonna be financially involved, is the problem.
You can talk to your own legal counsel.
So I think that maybe.
This is just for you to approve and bring to the, to the downtown boards, then.
Does Main Street have access to legal counsel?
For projects like this.
I would run it, you probably.
Yeah, take it, take it. No, that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, I understand. And that's why we're getting, get it to you.
Probably should run it by them.
Give it to legal, you're legal, so they can take a look at it and explain the entire situation to them and see where we need to go from there.
Should we just table this?
No, no, no. We should, we need.
Go ahead and, and give the, the rough draft.
Yeah, we're, we're approving this as a draft. We're approving the ability to send to you.
You'll have a final end of resolution.
Yeah, there's the approval.
Yeah, I'm not signing it.
So we understand this, so we know what contracts we're taking, we're taking it back to our board with.
Yes.
Well, I'm assuming you're gonna have to have road closures and everything else to, to put this thing up, so. It'll have to be run through the city.
So does this need a motion?
Yeah, i- is there any changes that you guys would like to see before?
Maybe just throw the, the location on there.
Location on, yeah, the initial location.
Because I think that's about the only place that it can go, right?
So. We've exhausted every other possibility.
And I, and I know we have. Easement there.
Yes, we did.
We. Do we have some kind of revision saying they're okay with this?
Holly met with, Holly and George met with her.
And, and Vision's fine?
Sorry.
Vision's fine with the location?
Uh, I, I have not had anyone to see that.
What does that mean?
You, you and George met with.
Well, I met with Amy.
You met with Amy.
Yes.
And, and Wayland's okay with this? I mean, the location and, and this will work?
Vision's, Vision's the one that's gonna have an issue, and they'll have to deal with it if they, that happens. I just don't want the city having to deal with Vision. If all of a sudden they say, hey, you're blocking our sign. And, uh, and we've accepted this project. I, I think we need something from saying.
And I want to hear Swayland also, before we move on.
I've also asked. For clarification on how we notify the neighbors. And, and the process of notifying the neighbors of the site. So my initial coming into this was to get verification on the site.
To P and Z, won't it? P and Z? Okay.
We are.
That would be something.
Wayland has spent numerous hours.
You might have to stand up, Wayland.
Many different sites. And standing is that, the, that, and story, and it's the penis site.
Right, I think you've been involved, right?
Yes, I was down there.
Exhausted, resources trying to find a location where this. This archway will go under the current, uh, size that it's built and it. Designed and built for, it's currently built. It needs to go in a location this size. Um, there are. No utilities foreseeable in the way. I've done my due diligence with sanitary sewer, water, um. Only thing that runs through this right-of-way area is a fiber optic line connecting inner school or the. The Boone Community School District interlink with a fiber optic. It is movable, um, it's safe, but it looks to be placed. Outside of the area of what would be needed for what it's. Uh, Perry and I met down there. Sorry to break you. One of the requirements will be that this thing needs to be at least three foot back, front back of curb for traffic safety. That was an issue on the, on the Spory Street guidance because. Still need to maintain ADA requirements for sidewalk and transverse of that. Location is the cleanest.
So you've worked all that out? And, and are we talking lights on this? Okay, so you've got whatever.
How, how deep are these footing?
Eighteen.
Eighteen feet deep?
They're eighteen feet down and fourteen.
In diameter?
Fine, except, so you had a question about notification and you asked Rafe about planning and zoning. Does it have to go before planning and zoning?
I just feel like that'd be the best way to notify the public is just go through P and Z and treat it like, uh, you know, I.
Have a hearing.
Yeah, have a hearing with everybody. It'll get notified in that block radius like we've done in the, in the past.
If they have a concern, they can come in. No, that's, it's not your response. That part is not your response.
Yeah.
Yes.
That, Kyle?
That sounds good. I think there sounds like there's several things that probably need to be sorted out with this.
And I feel like, I don't know if Main Street meant to get this involved, but I think you're this involved now. You're gonna have to just see this through. Um, and I, and I think, you know, reach out to your counselor, your, you know, legal counsel as well. I feel like we can rely on Rafe as well. Uh, to help with this. Um, but I think, yeah, I think you guys have just got in a little deeper than what I think you originally planned. Uh, but we'll, we'll get, we'll get through it. It's, it's gonna, it'll be neat to have, so.
But, well, and you never know what they're gonna come back and say. They might say, don't worry about it at all.
What's kind of our timeline? Our next board meeting is until the end of this month. Is this something that we can take care of by the next council? Is this something?
No, I, I don't think, because the, the construction wouldn't happen until September, so I think we're fine time, time-wise. We got time.
Well, P and Z, um, they would have to set a hearing and then hold a hearing, and they only meet once a month also.
Yeah.
Well, my question on that would be. Is this a zoning issue? Or is this a roadway project? Is this something that P and Z would have? Status and looking at?
Well, it's a structure that's.
Because it doesn't fit under building code. This is not something that we would inspect, um, because it doesn't fall under IBC or IRC codes as we look at. It, Perry, uh. It's more like a bridge.
Well. I think what you were talking about was using them as a. A way to gather information and place the notice and then present that to council. I, I don't think planning and zoning has any business in deciding this issue at all. But if you want to use them to. To gather the information, uh, and send a notice, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a proxy for gathering information about.
I just think it's a, it, it works good as communication, the way that you guys do it now, when it, like, if you're doing a structure.
Happy, I was just.
You know, you know, you've got the radius.
They don't have, like, official jurisdiction on the project itself, but it's a mechanism by which to get the feedback.
But to take it to planning and zoning, we probably need some sort of site plan or something to push up to that.
And, yeah, George has.
That we have it.
Yes. But I feel like somebody needs to inspect this that says that it's good to go before we take. You know.
It just doesn't fall under the genre of the building department. It, it's not within the IBC. These type of structures more as an engineering. Type structure.
I was gonna say Perry should probably be reviewing their drawings.
You know, they're engineered drawings. I think that.
Structurally engineered. I would say that that person or that firm needs to inspect it. Yeah, and recommend to us whether we should.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's what.
The site location has been expressed with the engineer.
Yeah, yeah. So here's, I think, what we should do. You want to accept the draft of this contract with the amendment of the specific location. And then also direct, uh, planning and zoning to set a hearing. So they, they can do that right away while you guys are working through the contract. See what I'm saying? So start the, the procedures in parallel with one another.
The materials.
So we don't have to wait on that planning and zoning.
Did you have a timeline for this? When it's gonna start? When you wanted to start?
September.
That, excuse me, the fabrication will start in July. The construction would start, uh, late August, early September, or a dedication at a public basis.
I'll make the motion to approve it with the site.
Site location and direct public, uh, planning and zoning to set a public hearing at the next meeting. Site location and direct public uh planning and zoning to set a public hearing at the next meeting.
Yes.
The motion is second. Any questions or concerns? Alright, please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Thank.
Williamson.
Yes.
You have some.
Yes, there is mud.
Bird.
Yes.
That's speed.
And just two other items. Um in the consent agenda, there is a a resolution approving a Xenia addendum. Um that is for, it's the ability for Xenia to take over Rolling Meadows Water District. This increases their capacity by fifty-five thousand cubic feet. Uh per month. Um it sets the rates for Rolling Meadows uh users at the same rate the city, the city of Boone residents are paying for water. And it will increase uh their rates um whenever our residence rates are increased per resolution. I believe we are getting close on the rest of the Xenia accounts, um. In regards to their water rates uh that are to be effective August first, uh that has to be approved by council no later than July seventh. Um so I'm hoping to get that here very soon from them. Uh in the consent agenda, there is also a Logan's Port Agreement. Uh and again, that is the same. It cleans up the current agreement that we have with them. And then it also sets the rates uh to match our citizens' rates. Um and that would also increase as our citizen rates are increased by resolution or ordinance. That's all I have.
Thank you. And lest you think these off the hook, Perry, I forgot you. Sorry, Paul.
Oh.
Alright, uh number seven consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless their request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Kaho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon. Elizabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Hey, number eight ordinances, a first reading ordinance twenty-three twenty to allow the city of Boone uh to change fireworks regulation. By amending chapter forty-one by deleting uh between hours of twelve P M noon and eleven P M. And also deleting between the hours of twelve P M noon and continuing through twelve thirty A M on January first. Um Chief, did you want to say why we have to do this?
We have no choice. Uh state law changed, legislature changed the state law on this, so that's, we are just amending hours to match state law. So.
We cannot.
We cannot.
Three hours on those days, period, end of story.
Correct.
Per new state law, so.
I could force.
I did get an email about this earlier today that there was a concern that we're doing this. I just want to make sure. Everybody knows, didn't have a choice in the matter.
Yes.
One way or the other.
Okay. I'll move.
Move to approve.
Second. Total roll.
Mormon.
Sure, yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Anstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kaho Kelly.
No, because I can.
Yeah. Principal stance. Um item nine, uh mayor's comments, uh. Let's see, I have a couple of things, uh so let everybody know that uh the Wednesday uh municipal band concerts have started. So make sure you head down to some of those. It's a really great time. Uh farmer's market will be starting. And so we've got stuff to do on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Um thanks again to the uh public, thanks to the public works crews for going out and uh and picking up uh all that junk for us and continuing to do a great job. I hope the weather holds out. Uh for all of you during that. I know we'll have some, a little bit of rain. Uh and then also, uh we had a lot of robust discussion tonight on several uh sides of a bunch of issues. Uh I really appreciate the candor that everybody had. And uh being willing to to come forward with your true feelings and just discuss things out and, you know, uh that's what we need to do. So I appreciate the the good discussion. Uh number ten, council member comments.
I have a couple of things. Um. I did attend the um send-off ceremony for our. Iowa National Guard, and I know several of you did also. I don't know, maybe all of you did. There was a big crowd. Um we, Boone really showed up for that and I had uh afterwards, I'd talked to the. Um I'm looking at this name here, but Major General Stephen Osborne, who was the one that um presented the the troops and gave a also a talk. And he just, I wanted to share, he said a couple of things. He said, you know, we always really, really appreciate coming to Boone. He said, they show up, they really support our troops. So that was really nice compliment that he made about um our community. The other thing that I attended was um and so I know many of you did too, was the groundbreaking. Um the indoor groundbreaking that we had for the Daisy um project. And uh Governor Reynolds was there along with um. The what president or CEO of the Daisy Dairy Product Project. Um and uh Mike Nag, the director of Iowa Department of Agriculture and several other state leaders. So uh once again. Um the governor uh at both instances said really good things about Boone and and how many things were happening in Boone. And so I think uh we need to give ourselves credit as well as all of the uh people that have worked on all of these projects because they don't just happen. And we are really getting a lot of positive um. Recognition for the things going on, so I just wanted to share the good news with everybody.